Good evening. Welcome to the Pullman City Council meeting for this Tuesday, August 22. And it's nice to have some of you here tonight. And with that, Dee, would you please take a roll?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Johnson.
Present.
Councilmember Benjamin. Councilmember Dubin.
Here.
Councilmember Guido.
Here.
Councilmember McCall. Councilmember Parks.
Here.
Councilmember Weller.
Present.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
We were notified by both Frances Benjamin and by Eileen McCall that they could not be here tonight. Do I hear a motion to excuse?
Move. Second.
Move and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, our announcements tonight. First of all, we want to thank all of the city staff and the Chamber of Commerce for putting on a fantastic Lentle Festival, one-day event on Saturday. Lots of comments coming back saying, hey, that one day worked pretty good. And also having everything at Rainy Park was also a lot of compliment on that. But I want to thank specifically Parks and Recreation, Maintenance and Operation, Police, Fire, Transit for all the help that they gave to Lentle Festival to make it another successful event. Coming up this Friday is Music at the Clock Tower. So if you take a look at WSU and the School of Music, you'll see they have a concert coming up. I don't know if you had a chance to ever go to the Clock Tower concerts, but they're quite good. Also, this day we're proclaiming the month of September as National Suicide Prevention and Action Month. Couple of weeks ago, Annie Pillers was here, our Whitman County Coroner, talking about some of the pro-things that the county and volunteers are doing to try and prevent suicides. So I'm going to read a little bit of the proclamation tonight. It just says, "Whereas September being recognized as Suicide Awareness Month, the National Suicide Prevention and Action Month proclamation was created to raise the visibility of mental health and proactive suicide prevention resources in our community. We also want to start the conversation, de-stigmatize it, and help connect people with appropriate support services. And whereas, according to the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, suicide is the second-leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of 10 and 34, with more than 48,000 people dying by suicide annually in the United States. And whereas, according to Hope for the Day, with an average of 132 suicides completed daily, and each one directly impacting 100 individuals, including friends and service members, families, social media connections, and neighbors, we can safely assume that everyone has been impacted by suicide. And whereas, the City of Pullman publicly places its full support behind those who work in that field of mental health, education, and law enforcement, and therefore, I Glenn Jackson, the Mayor of the City of Pullman, hereby proclaim the month of September as National Suicide Prevention and Action Month." And again, we thank all the volunteers who are working to prevent suicides in our community. And it's so true that I think every one of them has been impacted by somebody that we know that has gone through that. With that, we come now to item number C on our agenda tonight. Jeff Albright, our Finance Director, will give us a financial update.
Great. Thank you for having me again. So what we'll be going through is quarter two, so through the first half of the year, finances. And I'll be glad to answer any questions as they go. If you want to save questions to the end, that's perfectly fine too, but I'll just kind of give you a summary on where some things stand. So I'll start off with our general fund, and this probably will spend most of our time. We'll start off with the general fund revenue. As you can see, very positive here. So budget was a little over 12 million. We're a little over 14 million on general revenue. Very strong in general revenues. The majority of general revenue is made up from taxes. Those are pretty consistent. We kind of know where those are going to come in. But what we're really seeing is some strong things in sales tax in particular, utility tax, admission tax, and investment revenue. So that's really helping out, really drive that number up, as you can see, over the past years in budget. This doesn't include any airport or ARP funds. We kind of isolate those out because we do get a lot of that activity through there. But in general, most of our revenue areas are tracking better than budgeted. So sales tax revenue, I mentioned this, and this, you see that a really good increase. You obviously saw things pretty flat, the big dip in 2021 unsurprisingly to COVID, and then a good recovery last year and continued strong growth this year. So we're just under $3.2 million in sales tax revenue through mid-year. Budget was about 2.5. Construction C on the bottom is that kind of that teal line or that, excuse me, that kind of beige line there. You do see increases there, not at the same percentage, but you do see an increase in construction activity. That's a little flatter. So far this year, construction activity accounts for about 17% of sales tax revenue. So property tax revenue, again, this is pretty consistent. This is pretty easy to predict and pretty good collection. So the top line you see is what we budgeted for the year based off the information we get from the county to start the year. We usually will come in at less than 1% variance from that. It doesn't vary a lot. The blue line is what you can see for the historical collects through six months. So we're right about where we thought we'd be. Through six months, usually we've collected about 56% of the tax revenue. Right now, we're at 55%. That's not a huge difference. So we're a little bit behind historical collections, but it's pretty minor. So in general, property tax collection is pretty much where we want to be. The other thing to remember about property tax collection is we'll get it sooner or later. So if somebody doesn't pay their taxes now, it'll come down the road, either when they sell the property or through some type of lien. So again, that's a pretty stable revenue source. A few other general fund revenues that I think are just worth sharing or of interest. I just put up, I didn't do necessarily graphs on these, but just some historicals. So you see the utilities tax, building permit revenue, admissions tax, and marijuana and liquor tax. And there's certainly some fluctuation caused in these by COVID. But in general, utilities tax, admission tax, and the marijuana are up. Marijuana liquor tax is pretty consistent about where we thought it would be, a little bit higher. Building permit revenue is down a little bit. Now, you see that big dip, obviously, in 2020, which is not a surprise. And then you see a lot filed in 2021. We kind of had probably a little bit of a bulk backlog there. This doesn't necessarily lead to building. So permit doesn't necessarily mean somebody's going to actually do the work, but it's a pretty decent indicator. And you're seeing that really kind of level off. So that's one of the few, and it's not significantly, that's slightly behind budget, so not quite with budget. And I think that's something just to keep a track on. Again, along with that, sales tax for construction being fairly flat, you might see construction leveling out a little bit. I don't think it's a major thing, but maybe just something to keep an eye on that we might not see the growth that we've had in some years in construction. But overall, still very positive. So let's switch a little bit over to the general fund expenses. Again, you see a pretty consistent trend line here, and really, this is, other than, you know, reduced expenses during COVID, this is a pretty consistent, really primarily with inflation. So the good news is, right now, to date, we're at about 13.7 million in expenditures and budgeted almost 16 and a half. It's a little bit misleading. It is good in general. So out of that, about $2.7 million that we're under expenditures, about 1.6 of that is kind of delayed capital projects. So it's either capital projects that haven't been expended yet, items that maybe have a long lead time for capital. So we're not really ahead by 2.7. We're probably closer to ahead by a million, which is still good, obviously, but not quite you see there. So there's some timing things there that impact that a little bit. But in general, you've seen good expense control from the departments on their operating expenses. So legislative expenses, really right about where we thought we'd be. We're about $60,000 ahead or better than budget under expenditures. Now, really what that relates to is there's a $55,000 expense related to election fees that hadn't been expended yet. It was in the budget for June, hasn't been expended yet. So when you count that 55,000 in, pretty much dead on where we thought we'd be in expenses. Couple of things to keep in mind, 2022 and 2023 do include support for the Downtown Association, something that the council approved a couple of years ago. So that is a piece that's in there. So it's part of the reason you see that 2022 and 2023 a little bit higher in expenditures than historical. That and the increase in election voter fees is probably the two reasons you see that number up quite a bit from the past. Finance and administration fees, again, right about, almost exactly, to be honest, where we targeted budget-wise, off by $18,000. Couple of things to keep in mind, that spike in 2020 was related to some expenses related to moving into new city hall. So that was kind of a one-time expense. The other thing that kind of changed that to historical numbers, in 2021, we saw a move from all insurance premiums being in here to being dispersed through different funds. So expenses actually went up, but what was the expense to the finance administration went down. In 2020, it does have some expenses related to Munis, which is our new software implementation. So that's also part of the reason why I see 2023 spike up a little bit from the past couple of years. But again, pretty much right on target where we thought it'd be. Law enforcement expenses, fairly consistent trend line, other than 2020. Right now, it's about $1 million under budget for expenses. Now, again, about $800,000 of that's related to delayed capital. So really, on the operating side, what we're talking about is about $200,000 better than budget. So again, still good. It looks a little better when you just look at the straight numbers because we expect that $800,000 in capital expenses to still occur before the end of the year. But in general, what you're seeing is generally good controlled expenses for operations. Fire and ambulances, fairly similar story, about three-quarters of a million dollars under expenditures and a positive compared to budget. But again, about $450,000 of that is related to capital. So again, we probably look about $300,000 on the better side of budget for expenditures when you just look at the operating piece. So you're starting to kind of hear a consistent theme from me, right? Most of them are right about or a little bit better than budget on expenditures. And we see a lot of delays in the capital expenditures.
Knowing full well, if we have one major crime or you have one major fire, that's where you get overtime and then the budget goes.
That is definitely the case with both, well, with a lot of fire and police too. And we definitely saw it with police last year where we had some major expenses that were definitely not planned. So yeah, those can change extremely quickly. Community and economic development expenses, again, about a three-quarters of a million dollars expenditures through six months. It's a little bit better than budgeted. Sean Miller did start as a new economic development manager. So that was a position that was vacant for a short period of time, and we have him on board now. This budget doesn't have the capital expense. So again, you're seeing pretty much right about target on the budget. Library expenses, libraries doing quite well compared to budget. I'll be honest with you, I can't, probably the person who probably had the most difficulty in developing a budget coming out of COVID was probably the library. That was one of the most impacted, library and recreation were probably our two most impacted areas for COVID. So I'm sure budgeting out of COVID was difficult, and it's good to see that they're performing better than budget through that six-month period. So again, parks and recreation expenses, again, similar. It's about a little under $2 million in expenditures to date as opposed to about 2.5 in the budget. Again, looking at about $400,000 in delayed capital. So again, by the time you figure in the delayed capital, it's about $100,000 ahead of budget. So again, performing pretty well, pretty much right on budget for our operating expenses. So that's the end of the general fund. Overall, the general fund itself is about 17% under budget in expenditures. Out of that 17%, I would say about 12 of it is related to delayed capital. So when it's really said and done, it's about 5% favorable to budget that we're performing on the expenditures in the general fund. As we start to look at some of our other funds, streets and arterial streets. So again, this one can have some real variances to budget in both revenue and expenses, depending on timing of projects, timing of grants, those types of things. So you see both revenue and expense are significantly under what was budgeted. And that's not surprising. Part of that is, is we had budgeted for the downtown project originally was going to start this year. So there is both revenue coming in, getting transferred in from the ARP funds as well as expenses obviously associated with that. So neither that revenue or expense is hitting. So, you know, in the grand scheme of things, you know, the revenue and expense is pretty equal on this, and you kind of see, you know, some variances over the years. But overall, about where we want to be, you know, knowing that there's some timing issues and the delay of the downtown project that impact it. Utility fund, again, fairly similar. This one has a little bit, not quite as much variance in some timing things. There's a few projects that haven't occurred yet or are a little delayed that caused us to be quite favorable to expense budget. But in the grand scheme of things, pretty close to where we want to be, both revenue and expense. And revenue does exceed expense, which is a good place to be. That 2019 spike, in case you're curious, that was related to some of the bond projects that we did. So we had increased revenue from bonds as well as increased expenses related to some of those projects. Transit, you see some strong revenues in transit in the last couple of years. Again, there is some grants involved in transit that can really affect timing. Generally, it's going to now to about a zero budget at the end of the year by the time you deal with the timing of some of those grants and operations. But in general, right about where we thought we'd be in transit. There is about a $2.5 million grant that we received last year for operating in second quarter. And that's why you see that big kind of spike there. And I think we just, you know, normally it comes in.
Now, Jeff, when we have to replace the batteries on the hybrids at 50,000 each for two buses, does that pop in the expenses there or does that come under another fund?
Would pop, yeah. That would pop in these expenses. So yeah. You'll definitely see some of those. Again, another example of where a couple unexpected things can shift a budget pretty quickly. Internal service funds, I did put the revenue in here because it's really a net zero. It's kind of our own revenue. But this is activity related to our equipment rental division, our government buildings, our IT. And so there you just kind of see the expenses related. Again, 2018 had some bond expenditure, bond project expenditures that created there. And this is actually good to see these expenses rising slightly because that means we're kind of reinvesting in ourselves, right? We're reinvesting in our equipments, our facilities, other types of things. So this is a pretty good trend line. It's not spiking up high, but it's gradually increasing. The biggest point, you can see, budget was about 4.3 million. We're about three, a little over 3.7 million to date in expenditures. Right now, buildings and IT are pretty much exactly where we thought they would be. Equipment rental division is seeing some delays in some purchases, and that's probably what's creating that variance. That's a timing variance that should pretty much balance out by the end. Civic Improvement Fund revenues, this is good to see. You obviously saw the huge drop, and this is again related to hotel activity. You saw the huge drop unsurprisingly in 2021, really rebounded well in '22 and '23. I think even better than we probably could have hoped, which is great. I think when the budget was developed, we were fairly conservative, not still knowing exactly what was going to come out as, you know, coming out of COVID, we were developing the budget and, you know, what, 15, 18 months ago? So, but it's good to see really positive numbers in 2023 generated from that. And that allows us to support a lot of community events and tourism and those types of things. So just a few final thoughts. Generally, revenues can tend to remain pretty positive, and that's a good trend to see. You know, we saw a few in first quarter, and you're just never quite sure if that's, you know, a unique spike or not. Most of those trends are continuing, or at least pretty much, they've leveled out a little bit. Overall, control of expenses is going well. Our operational expenses really is kind of sitting at about that 5% under, which is kind of where you want most of your departments operating is, you know, so that way when the unexpected things comes up, you have a little bit of cushion to address those. Again, the delays in capital, and those are for a variety of reasons. Most of those expenditures, though, we do expect to hit by the end of the year. There will probably be a few that will carry over into next year for various reasons. But we do expect most of those capital expenditures to hit the next few months. And then I think something to just continue to monitor is that construction growth. I think that's something that has some real long-term impacts, and we'll want to keep a little bit of eye on it because that impacts everything from property tax revenue to sales tax on construction to those types of things. So it seems like that's leveling off, which I think is a nationwide trend, right? That construction is starting to flatten out based off of inflation and various factors. So not a surprise. Couple of other things, we are implementing our new Munis software, so we will go live on September 1st. That'll change a lot of processes, so it'll be a little different getting information out of our financial system. But I think ultimately, it's going to put us in a really good place. We've been doing a lot of training this week with staff to get us going. So just be aware that it's going to change how we produce some of our data. All the information's the same, just how we pull it out might change a little bit. And we do still have a few budget amendments to bring back for a few things related to some salary and wage adjustments that do need to come back. So just know that we, you know, based off of the decisions made, I think, in late June, we will be coming back with those few budget adjustments before year end. Any questions that anyone has?
Excellent report. Okay. Nathan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jeff, thanks. We've been very lucky to have a lot of really good financial directors, everything from Troy Wu to you now, and it's really great. I do have a question regarding, I know you can't give us exact, but if you could kind of look in a crystal ball, I know with the PAC-12, the questions going on about that. And of course, that's going to affect things such as admissions tax and so on. Could you kind of?
Yeah, you know, if I can predict the PAC-12 conference, I probably could get a lot of jobs. You know, WC Athletics will impact some things. You know, I don't know that, it'll be interesting to see, you know, with, we're not talking a, you know, 90,000-seat football stadium like some schools are. So, you know, a 10% drop in, say, in attendance at a WCU game on admissions taxes is not going to be. I mean, it's not going to be great, right? It's lost money. But that's not going to be something that's going to be, all of a sudden, we're looking at budget cuts or those types of things. You know, I think there'll be some impactful, you know, sales tax revenues generated when people are in town. But again, that's six days a year, so the majority of those numbers are coming on a daily basis. So it'll be impactful. I don't see it being tragic, but it'll be something, again, that we'll want to continue to monitor. You know, where, again, the money comes from property taxes and those types of things, those won't change. So that's good to know, that's secure. But it's definitely something that we want to keep an eye on, and I don't see it being majorly impactful. But probably the biggest thing is we won't see the growth that we've seen the last couple of years. It'll probably be more of a flat trend, would be my guess.
Then there's also the possibility, because there's all kinds of views out there, that you might have teams that are closer with fans that travel better. And then you can actually pack a stadium too. So I mean, there's all kinds of theories that are out there. And nobody knows.
Yes. That's the thing we've definitely learned out of this, is nobody knows.
That's right. Okay. Any other comments? Thank you very much. Appreciate it very much. Next item on the agenda is the comment. Persons may comment on any agenda item the City Council will take final action on, including the consent agenda but excluding items where public comment has previously been accepted. This includes prior public hearings. Anyone wants to make any comment on any final action tonight? Seeing none, we will close that. We now move to consent agenda. These items are considered routine in nature. And the council's had a chance to look all these items over ahead of time. Do I hear a motion to read by title and lay?
Second.
Move and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, our city attorney, Thad O'Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number one is a motion to dispense with the reading of the August 8, 2023 meeting minutes and approve them as submitted. Item two, a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 111237 through 111284, totaling $144,080.00. Item three, a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 111285 through 111304, electronic transfers 1211221035 and 1041 through 1046, payroll direct deposits numbered 87034 through 87374, totaling $1,492,089.05. Item four, a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 111305 through 111348, totaling $1,230,708.22. Item number five, accept bid from Sea Western for a new Bauer SCBA compressor system. Item six, resolution number R-40-23, a resolution accepting the bid of Signature Roof Service LLC for re-roofing Old City Hall and authorizing execution and delivery of the contract for said project. And finally, item seven, resolution number R-41-23, a resolution accepting the bid of Intermech Inc. for a police department in Old City Hall chiller replacement and authorizing execution and delivery of the contract for said project.
Is there any item the council would like out for discussion? Seeing none, the consent agenda consists of items one through seven. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Move and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then we now go to the regular agenda tonight. We start with a triple header from our transit director, Wayne Thompson, tonight. First item is an ordinance dealing with code of ethics and the transportation requirements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. First, a small piece of context, so you know why I'm here with these unique, typically non-transit items. When we apply for grants, we go through the State Department of Transportation, whether it's state or federal money. And rather than a federal triennial audit, we see the state DOT send staff every two years. They look at a capital grant and an operating grant. And in the most recent review, the only findings that they had were that we were missing some FTA-required language in three city policies, and another policy was due for a renewal, renewal only. So these are updates that need to happen so that we stay in good standing and remain eligible for grants in the future. The first ordinance before you tonight is an update to the city's code of ethics. And it updates only one section, 1.05.020, where it adds three items. And these are shown in the ordinance as 17, 18, and 19. Item 17 prohibits a city representative from accepting a bonus or commission to obtain federal assistance, which would be a grant in our case. 18 restricts our lobbying or political activity. And 19 prohibits us from doing business with an entity who has been suspended, debarred, or otherwise excluded from doing this type of contract work. And what we do is we use a website called sam.gov, and we confirm that our vendors are listed as legitimate, in good standing vendors, and we can do business with grant money. So with that said, I'm requesting a motion to approve this ordinance relating to the city's code of ethics.
Any questions? If not, do I hear a motion this?
Move to adopt ordinance number 23-13.
Second.
Move and seconded. Thad, do you want to read the ordinance, please?
Sure, thank you. Ordinance number 23-13, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pullman, Whitman County, Washington, relating to Title I, Administration and Personnel, amending Chapter 1.05 Code of Ethics and other matters properly related thereto.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, we now move to the second item on the regular agenda tonight, and that's another ordinance. And again, Wayne Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As I just noted, state DOT requirements have added additional language needs. Uh, as I just noted, uh, state DOT requirements have added additional language needs to certain policies. And this ordinance relates to procurement and includes two additions. First, under the competitive procurement section, which is one point one zero-seven point zero-two-five, we've added language that acknowledges the simplified acquisition process can be used for purchases between three thousand and one hundred thousand dollars. And what this means to us is that we go out and get quotes from a number of, of vendors, usually three. We don't impose unreasonable qualifications or brand requirements, geographic requirements, and then we make a cost analysis and move forward. Uh, we also added language under the public bidding award of contracts section, uh, which is one point one zero-seven point zero-nine-zero. Uh, this clarifies how protests of awards take place, which is basically to submit the protest in writing to our city clerk in advance of the award, or in person at the city council meeting on the meeting at which the event or the award is, is awarded. And I am requesting a motion to approve this ordinance relating to the city's procurement code.
Any questions on this ordinance? If not, I entertain a motion to approve.
Move to adopt ordinance number twenty-three dash fourteen.
Second.
Thad, do you want to read this?
Sure. Ordinance number twenty-three dash fourteen, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pullman, Whitman County, Washington, relating to procurement revising sections one point one-seven point zero-two-five and one point one zero-seven point zero-nine-zero to the Pullman City Code and other matters properly related thereto.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our third item tonight is a resolution. And again, Wayne Thompson? Updating resolutions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Uh, this is also an update to city policy, uh, after the biennial site visit and recommendations. But in this case, uh, the only change is a date stamp showing the, uh, the policy's review and renewal date. Uh, there are no other changes to the, the DBE plan. Part of the requirement of having a disadvantaged business enterprise plan is that you renew it every three years. And that is something that, uh, when I brought this to you in twenty eighteen, I have since overlooked. So we're getting back on that three-year review cycle. Quick context as to what this plan really means. When we participate in federal grant programs, uh, the city has to have a disadvantaged business enterprise DBE plan. And the intent of that plan is to ensure nondiscrimination in our contracts and awards, uh, and helps to create an environment where these small and often disadvantaged, uh, vendors can, can compete and often outgrow that DBE status and compete in the, the regular market. The expectation on our part is to make a good faith effort. Uh, we, we've had a hard time finding DBE vendors, most agencies do, but we've done better than most. Uh, in recent years, we've found three vendors to provide office supplies, uh, uniform items like hats and coats, and more recently latex gloves. So the, the expectation is that we, we earnestly look, we award contracts where we can, and of course, uh, we need to renew it every three years. So I'm requesting a motion to approve this resolution relating to the city's DBE plan.
Any questions on this? Do I hear a motion?
Move to adopt resolution number R dash forty-two dash twenty-three.
Second.
Second.
And Thad?
Resolution number R dash forty-two dash twenty-three, a resolution updating the City of Pullman disadvantaged business enterprise DBE plan in a conformance with forty-nine CFR part twenty-six and rescinding all prior actions and resolutions related to a DBE plan, including resolution number R dash sixteen dash eighteen.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That, we now move to item number four, and Sean Wells, our Public Works Director, is here tonight talking about a sale agreement of property. So Sean?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, City Council. Um, here representing Clayton Forsman, my deputy public works director, would normally be presenting this. Um, he decided that he would rather spend tonight celebrating the one-year birthday of his daughter. So you get me. On, uh, February thirteenth, twenty eighteen, a Parks and Path bond was approved by Pullman voters. That bond included a project to construct a path from Copper River Base, I'm sorry, Copper Basin at Canyon View Drive to Darrell Street through Conservation Park and to continue on to Harrison Street. This path is to serve two purposes, both pedestrian access and maintenance access, as most of the path will follow the existing public utility corridors. The location and alignment of the proposed path is shown on the map, included in your council packet and on the screen for those of you following the meeting online. At the far north end of the project, the path is planned to follow an underground stormwater utility line on land that is owned by Stephen and Donna Holstad. The city holds a utility easement for that storm line. However, the existing easement does not provide for public access, which is necessary for the path's project. Therefore, a small strip of land, a prodding, a mounting to approximately eleven thousand two hundred and fifty square feet is proposed for city acquisition to allow full and legal pedestrian access for the path. The area land is shown in red on that map. Staff have negotiated a purchase price for said land of one dollar per square foot with the Holstads, which is fair and reasonable price. Purchase and sale agreement was prepared and is included for council action in order to establish the appropriate terms and conditions of the land purchase. Approval of said agreement is requested of council tonight. Pending approval, staff will move forward with the necessary steps to acquire the land and bid the project, which we anticipate occurring the fall with construction early next year. That concludes my presentation, and I'm willing to answer any questions if there are any.
Any questions, comments? If not, do I hear a motion on this?
Move to approve resolution R dash forty-three dash twenty-three.
Second.
Second.
And Thad?
Resolution R dash forty-three dash twenty-three, a resolution authorizing the mayor and finance and administrative services direct to take all actions necessary to enter into a purchase and sale agreement with Stephen Holstad and Donna Holstad for the purchase of certain real property and all other matters related thereto.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with appreciation to the Holstads for agreeing to this? Next comes our discussion item, and that's the twenty-twenty-four legislative priorities. I know Mike sent out all our priorities were last year. We've had some updates from there. This is a chance to get you to think because I think we're going to have, last I heard, our legislators here like the latter part of November or something of that nature. I think we're still trying to get confirmation, like one or two we've got right now. So with that, Mike Urban?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. It is that time of year where we should be looking at the, um, city council to be looking at the legislative, uh, priority list going into our annual meeting with the state delegation currently scheduled for November twenty-eighth. We tried to get the fourteenth to work and that, uh, was a no, no-go for one of them. So we're locked in on two right now. D, we're still waiting to hear from the third. So we're going with that date for now, otherwise we're going to have to move this up into October, and that could create some additional issues. We will keep you posted on that when we do have the full confirmation. So, that being said, uh, this is the, this is a city council-driven process, so I wanted to make sure that this got in front of you in plenty of time, give a chance to give the staff some direction and a work plan for this activity and, uh, see how we wanted to go about doing this this year. So with that, uh, with some discussion and some direction.
Comments, suggestions for the ones that, uh, we have, our twenty-twenty-three legislative priorities? For those of you that are viewing at home, when you start talking about legislative priorities, one of our, uh, legislators, Mary Die, has been working with fire department officials for years, several years, and finally got that into the bill that was signed by the governor. So when you see all these wildfires going around here and you see an immediate response with a helicopter and water, that was a lot of Mary Die's work. And that's how it shows the importance of being persistent, to still work with that and get that done. And I know Mary, I, when I talked to her at, uh, some event here just recently, she was saying that she had a, she had very, very good fortune this year with a number of bills that she'd come up with. But this one dealing, every time I see a helicopter up there or some kind of a plane drop, knowing how long it took us to finally get that kind of air support. And now with that legislation, it's, it's been rather immediate, so it's been really good. So comments? Okay, Becky?
Um, and we'll, we'll become revisiting this, is that right, Mike? We have time, like at other council meetings, to come back and talk about this as well?
If it's the direction, then yes, I will.
I would like that. I would personally like, especially since we're missing a couple of our, our members here tonight. Um, I'm, just a couple of things, um, Highway twenty-six passing lanes, I just drove back on twenty-six. I, if we're not done with those, I think we're getting really close, but I'd like to leave them on just to hear the update on that from our legislators. And then the other thing that I think is missing on here is support for education, specifically tuition support. So back in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, when the state started withdrawing support for, for tuition for students, it's just kind of continued, increased along the way. And I think, uh, of course, it impacts the individual students a lot, but it also impacts the towns in which those students exist. So I don't know that our legislators are hearing from a lot of towns about this, but I would like them to hear from us because what that does for us, not only are those individual students, uh, have far less money, it also puts a tax on our support system. And I don't mean a literal tax, I mean, it, it, it taxes them, it strains them, like our food banks and, and things like that. So because we're so impacted by these students who are struggling to pay rent, I know I've heard from GPSA several times and they don't, you know, they're, they're really concerned about rents. They're concerned about the transit, they're concerned a lot about a lot of things. And I've had conversations with them where I've been very frank with them that I don't think that is the issue. I think the issue is that we are not supporting education the way we should. So I'd like to see that one on there, um, at some point, and then of course, hear from other members as well.
Nathan? Thank you, Ms. Mayor. A lot of these, I, I appreciate what Becky, um, said, especially about GPSA, and waiting for the other council members as well. However, addressing the ones that we have in front of us from last year, a lot of these still remain large issues. Um, I, I definitely, I know last time in Olympia, there was some confusion, um, about the railroad tracks in Pullman, and I still feel that's extremely, it would be an economic, um, boon for us here to be able to address that. But I do feel that we need to make sure that our representatives understand we only mean in the city. This continues to be a, a mixed message, I feel. And whatever's heard out in the community, our focus really needs to be here in the city so that they understand that we're not encroaching into the county or any other rural area. Um, this is really about dealing with the city. So I think that's important. I think also the mental health, I was looking at the AWC, um, priorities in twenty-twenty-three, and one of the ones, uh, that dovetail pretty nicely with our mental health is, um, access to community-based behavioral health services, uh, to include substance use disorder treatment and dual diagnosis facilities. Out, out here, one of the largest things we run into, and Annie Pillers had discussed this, is that, um, we don't have access to as many services as the west side. Um, and in our rural areas, we really need to be able to have community, um, collaboration. And there's a lack of funding here, uh, even though, um, it describes having four million dollars in grant funding for local alternative response programs. That's really a drop in the bucket. I'd like to see, uh, if we can have an increase, especially here in Pullman. I think if we also say, uh, east side and general rural areas, I, I think, I think they would agree to that. And I know several legislators have been supportive of behavioral health. Uh, we have some good ones there. So those are my comments, uh, currently. And that's, that's where I'll leave it.
Can we add on mental health, uh, encouraging the Department of Health to relax some of the requirements for certification?
Absolutely.
And have reciprocity for other states, because that's one of our big issues too in mental health.
That's a great idea.
So let's put that into the system too.
Okay, can I ask two clarifying questions then? Uh, back to Nathan, your comment about the, um, talking about the railroad tracks and the city limits. Were you saying that, because it says in the document, repurpose the railways within the city limits. Were you talking about enhancing the document or having a better discussion with our community and the verbal discussions? Or were you talking about both?
Yes, meaning, yeah, I, I just, there seems to be some mix-up, and we need to have a unified message, um, in order to get this, get this done.
Thank you, Nathan.
It's been, and then.
It's definitely the city, that's where we're at.
And then the mayor, to your point too, under mental health, it does say accepting certification from other states and adding telehealth options. So are you, is that the same, same type of thing that we just discussed? Or do we want to really punch up the language a lot?
I like to punch up the language a little.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because they're, they're starting to, I'm starting to hear a little bit from my state contacts that they're actually starting to look at the Department of Health and try to do some more encouragement in that category. But I think we just need to push it a little bit more. Megan, did you have a comment?
I do. Um, I, I encourage that and I support the idea of being more specific around, um, that idea of reciprocity, um, specifically. And then I do, I guess my suggestion would be on the rail banking and the, uh, railroad specifically is just to reiterate that it's city limits that we're talking about. Um, I don't know if that would be helpful to put that in the language. And then as it relates to the downtown bypass, because there is still, um, a lot of, um, talk about that, continues to be a lot of talk about it. And I really encourage, uh, constituents to talk to their, their state representatives about this because, uh, it really requires working with Department of Transportation, and there is a limit to how much the city can, can impact that. So I really want, uh, our legislators to hear that. And I'm encouraging, um, again, a grassroots effort, uh, group to form for those folks that feel very passionate about that. And I understand they do, particularly the downtown businesses, the need to get the, the heavy traffic, heavy trucks off of the, uh, the road, but that is a state highway. And we need to hear from folks that that is a priority for them.
Do we, uh, should we put there what support for the sand road? I know our public works director has been dealing a little bit with the county on that, just to make sure that we actually specify sand road, because the county's been pushing that, which also will help us on the bypass. So maybe let's put the word sand road in there.
Sure, and I can tell you that, uh, Sean did meet with the RTPO, um, technical committee today. They are still working on trying to, um, gain funding for alternative bypass study. They're in, they're, they're in the steps in the process. The dollars aren't available today. And the, um, uh, building the concept to receive those dollars for the study is going along, uh, according to plan, and the RTPO has taken the lead on that item.
Should we also have some language on the Pullman Moscow Regional Airport, supporting not only the city through our efforts on the new road that we're going to put to the terminal, but also to encourage the county and support the county, because they're trying to take the road from past the terminal to, um, to Highway two-seventy? Uh, let's just try and make sure that we have one unified effort as we push that. Pat?
Um, thank you, Glenn. Mike, just, uh, so along the lines of the downtown bypass, I'm thinking if we put some verbiage in there relative to, um, collaborating with our other regional partners like the county, that that will get us a little bit more leverage in the thoughts of our legislators, because I know one of them is very interested in a possible bypass that's being supported by Whitman County. And if we can show that we're interested in continuing to be partners, um, along those lines, that that might grab a little bit more attention. Just a thought.
Do you think we should, the sand road should help on that one, right?
I, I would think so, but that, I mean, I, I think it's important that we actually show on. I would think so, but that, I mean, I think it's important that we actually show ongoing collaboration with, you know, our regional partners, mainly obviously Whitman County, but I think that will help us.
Sure, and then also, too, to the sand road piece, well, part of that collaboration needs to be with the state of Idaho.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because they're not even been discussed with this yet.
So just kind of working those partnerships is my thought. Thank you.
Okay. Anne?
Yeah, and just for that point, I mean, we can point to our success with the airport and how that collaboration works so well and is working. And so the railroad tracks, most of the council went to legislative days for Association of Washington Cities. They host it once a year in February, and, you know, all these legislators are getting hit that all during the session with people coming to them. But wow, that was a non-starter this time with us, 100%. Well, Joe Schmick, we did have a nice conversation with him. So what Megan was alluding to with our residents and getting involved and just simply writing and communicating with the legislators, we don't need them to try to get to DOT, we don't need to make, have them do anything like that, because that actually kind of makes things a little more difficult on our end to talk to them about. So, but yeah, letters and campaigns and whatever would, I think that would be helpful. So just as us as city and, you know, and also I agree, no, so that's all on that. I think the bypass, absolutely, county being involved. I don't really have anything to add that anybody said. I think that we, and obviously we need to keep downtown revitalization. One thing that, as a member, as a council liaison for DPA now, and, you know, I'm hearing a lot about how are they going to survive next summer? So, and we all have heard that, so maybe some sort of economic help there. I don't know if we can talk to our legislators about what is available to assist the businesses a little bit next summer. I did, though, point out to them that they are resilient, and they did, in fact, survive COVID. So I think, I think they've got it in them, and I think our community will get around them, you know, and rally to support them as well. But that was the only thing that came to mind.
Some even found a back door, which could be a front door.
Yes, yes.
During construction, so.
Yes.
And will help them as much as we can.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Well, for having two council members missing, and we had a lot of input. Becky, I want you to notice that, we gave a lot of input here tonight. And then we can do this again another time.
Thank you. I'll take a bunch of the notes I wrote, work with Dee on the video, come up with some additional pieces part of the next packet, and I'll put it on the next discussion for September 12.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Next item is new business, any new business to come before the council tonight? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moving second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?